Well, I tried it with the computer also last time. I didn't like it because I couldn't write that.
Yeah. I go back to my colleague base. And kind of one more thing.
That's right. I just did it all.
I can't tell them I did it. Okay. I love it.
Sure, it would be perfect.
We had a couple.
Yeah.
It'd be nice.
Right.
Oh, so you actually wrote something?
Yeah. I want to speak, just speak. For a little bit. Be so happy. So when is it? Are you doing it?
Oh, I do.
Just make me look, make me look good.
Pull it very far away.
Mayor Bauer?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Rennick?
Here.
Alderman McDermott?
Here.
Alderman Madre?
Here.
Elder Woman Joseph?
Here.
Elder Woman Joan?
Here.
Adam Mayor, we have four.
All right. Brandon Julius in the class?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right, I, uh, I think because of the rescheduled meeting, the, uh, Chatlin is not, uh, here today. So, uh, at, at this time, I'm gonna ask us all to take fifteen, twenty seconds and do our own internal invitations, just wishing for, for guidance and thankfulness on, on how basically minimal the storm was to Jamaica Beach. So if we could just have fifteen seconds of, of quiet. Amen?
Amen.
All right, uh, the next thing on the agenda is, does anybody know of any conflicts of interest provided is on the agenda?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to address something. At a, a previous council meeting, um, the question was raised about a, a conflict with a councilperson, um, and regarding STRs. Um, I have investigated that. I've, uh, conversed with our city attorney, and she tells me that there are no conflicts that exist, so.
Okay.
We can move forward without any, without any issue.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. All right, um, next is public comment. I believe we have three emailed comments and then one, uh, present comment. Uh, Ms. Williford?
Mayor, City Council, my name is Kayla Williford. I live off Marina Drive in Jamaica Beach. Um, we learned this May, that the decision was made to place a large roll-off dumpster at the septic plant off Marina Drive after the trash dumpsters from the beach were removed. We were given no notice of this, or we were given no voice from the decision. The roll-off dumpster was placed there to handle all the beach trash. This is unacceptable. The beachgoers and the visitors and their trash, their rights were placed over the value of our neighbors and our neighborhood. Our septic plant, we're all aware of, is part of our failing infrastructure, and placing a dumpster there is a significant health hazard. We have no idea of what is in the trash that is picked up from the beach. And anyone that spends time cleaning up the beach is aware of the needles, the dirty diapers, the bottles, the food, and who knows what else that is left by people coming during the day that have no vested interest in our community. When this dumpster was placed there, I walked by it, I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to Kendall, and I've observed it. And it smells horribly. I've actually asked two of the city council members to go out there with me and look at it and to also see the situation. And both of them are very gracious about doing that. There's no way about getting around this. This is a health hazard and a health concern. It brings in rodents, flies, maggots, the birds, and you can't cover it up with plants or tarps. You can't walk away from it without smelling it. And you can't be out on a hot day regardless of smelling it in the neighborhood because it stings. And if we have another hurricane, what about potential cross-contamination to our septic plant, our water treatment plant? You know, this dumpster is brought in, it contains trash, and we have no control of it leaching into the grounds around there. If the situation of a hurricane occurs where we have high water, uh, there's a real possibility of that dumpster becoming a, a floating obstacle in our neighborhood and the danger to our plant. The cost of collecting, moving, storing, and disposing the beach trash is costly. There have been a parade of vehicles hauling trash up and down from the neighborhood, so I know the expense that's been incurred by talking to Kendall and you, Mayor, about that. The dumpster was removed prior to Hurricane Barrel. I thank the city council, if y'all were involved in this, the mayor and Kendall for doing that. Uh, but it cannot return to the septic plant. Having a dumpster in the middle of Jamaica Beach devalues all our property, not just my mom, Marina Drive, everyone here that owns property in Jamaica Beach. Who's going to want to buy a house or have a family home in a neighborhood where they know that we have a city dump in the middle of it? You don't have that in Lafitte's, you don't have that in Pirates, you don't have that in Sea, Isle of Teremar, or anywhere else. So we have to find a solution. Let's take the money that we know that we have from the cost of transporting, storing, containing, removing, and let's find a solution. I know you and I, Mayor, and Kendall have been working on this, I've talked to the city council members, and I have no problem being part of the solution, but we've got to have a solution besides this. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Are you gonna read the email comments?
Yes, hello. David Minter, one-six-seven-one-zero, Marina. First, I appreciate the recent efforts to address trash collection on the beach. The level of visitors on the weekend has created a huge trash problem, and many visitors simply don't do a good job of putting garbage in receptacles or cleaning up their mess. I would like the city to consider an alternative to dumping the beach trash in a dumpster at the treatment plant. I prefer the dumpsters on the beach where trash can be more easily disposed of versus transporting trash on a trailer throughout the community. And all that trash at the plant creates problems with birds, rodents, and smell. I heard one issue with dumpsters on the beach was rusty. Are there alternatives to the huge steel dumpsters? I do believe more frequent emptying of the blue cans on the weekends has been helpful to make sure cans don't overflow. All that trash gets blown into the community or swept into the surf. Lastly, since the beach is packed out on summer weekends leading to more trash, more police presence, et cetera, we need to consider charging for entrance to the beach to cover all the increased costs of the city. Thank you. Andrea Speary, one-six-six-one-seven, Jamaica Beach. I would like to commend city council on their communication pre, during, and post-storm. I, like many, am concerned about the diminished dunes after Barrel. I have heard that the GLO has approved replacing the sand fencing along the JB stretch of the beach. Will this fencing go in the same location as the previous fencing? This placement would encourage development of the dunes as well as encouraging the vegetation to return. Vehicles driving or parking up close to the new dune line will pack the sand and not allow recovery of vegetation or sand mound. Please take this into consideration when the fencing is done. I'm also concerned about the amount of trash that is now in the dunes post-storm. It should be removed for, for the health of the dunes, but whose responsibility is it to remove it? Is it JB's, volunteer groups? Can hot be used for this? As it would definitely fall under the improved visitor experience, experience. I see an agenda item on beach trash pickup. Thank you for removing, removing all trash bins and bin holders from the beach prior to the arrival of Barrel. What is removing all the trash bins and bin holders, uh, what is the city considering regarding trash? Personally, I think we have too many bins cluttering the beach. I am of the "you brought it here, you take it home" philosophy. Beaches and other parts of the country have done this successfully. Maybe, like the recycling bins, we could only have trash bins with small openings for small trash items. This would help keep trash from blowing out of the bins and discourage its birds from taking trash out. Since it is often the chairs, umbrellas, tents, et cetera, that quickly fill the trash bins, lids with smaller opening would make it possible to dispose, impossible to dispose of these items at the beach. JB could put a bin for these types of items near City Hall with a sign as you enter Buccaneer to the beach with directions as to where to discard any large items. With our improved police presence on the beach, citations could be issued for large items not disposed of correctly. Thank you. Charlotte Schodinger, one-six-seven-zero-seven, Marina Drive. The large roll-off container used as, as a beach trash dump site at the treatment plant has caused great concern and alarm for those of us who live near and around the plant. It is highly unsanitary to have a dump site in the middle of a neighborhood. It attracts rats, raccoons, coyotes, and birds, et cetera. Needless to say, this trash also emits a stench in a hundred-degree temperature environment. We are also worried about the cross-contamination with the treatment plant in times of heavy rain, wind, flooding. The container has been stacked to the near overflowing and is visible from the street and from our homes and decks. It will devalue our properties. The movement of the beach trash to the container at the plant and the emptying of the container has created additional traffic on our street. The city must find another solution to collecting and disposing of beach trash that does not include placing it in the middle of a residential area.
All right. Okay, we don't have any special presentations. Uh, on announcements, the, uh...
Madam Mayor? So these have changed since, uh...
I know. I was gonna, yeah, I was gonna, uh, I was gonna say, can you please update us? Kendall, on elevator outage, uh, they've been having trouble getting parts, so Kendall, fill us in.
But, well, um, all the parts are in, uh, but the, the, um, repairmen, they didn't have power as of Monday. And so we had pushed it back until this week, so they're actually looking to push it into August. We don't have a, we don't have a date scheduled yet, um, but it looks like it will be sometime in August. And as far as the repair had bingo, we are rescheduling that. So, um, no date has yet been determined.
Yeah, that was scheduled for tomorrow night, right?
That's correct.
Yeah, so that, that has been postponed till, till future announced dates. Okay. Next are our reports from directors. Um, City Administrator Francis?
Yes, ma'am. So, um, quite a few things here. Uh, across off City Hall elevator and parrot bingo. Um, but, uh, let's start with the beach user fees survey. It was scheduled to be completed, um, by tomorrow, the nineteenth. However, with everything that is, uh, has taken place, I would recommend that we extend the deadline for the completion of that survey. Um, I'm, I'm recommending an additional two weeks, so it would be the, I think it's August, yeah, August second, and then we could bring it back to the council at the August eighth meeting, was my thought in regards to that. Let's kind of follow the long lines of, of the comments. Trash, and this is, this is our regular trash and the debris cleanup. Um, we've encountered some issues, and I'm not sure where the disconnect is right now. Um, the disaster debris cleanup has begun. We have a contractor going through town. They began Monday, and they were going every street in, every street in the community, and they will be picking up the stuff that is left in the right of way. At the same time, Amerowaste has been collecting their normal trash routes, uh, but we've received several complaints from across the community that Amerowaste has not picked up, and get mostly complaints about black bags full of yard waste that are set right next to their cans or something like that. Um, so I have reached out to Amerowaste. I have not received a call back yet as to, uh, but we're looking into this. But in regards to the debris cleanup, uh, I talked to the monitor today. They might be halfway through their first pass within the city. So they will make a, a pass through the city, um, probably give it a couple of days, reschedule. They will make a second pass, pass through the entire city. Then we'll reevaluate, and if a third pass is needed, we, they will come back for a third pass. So, uh, um, it'll be a little bit of a, it takes a lot of time to get through the entire city, so be patient with that, and then we'll...
They have made their first pass, though?
They're about halfway through their first pass.
Okay, 'cause I was gonna say. They have made it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and that's, um, I should start receiving more detailed reports, emails from our monitoring...
Okay.
...company, but I have not got those yet. Budget workshop, that was supposed to be scheduled for tonight. We have moved to Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, the twenty-third, at six P. M., right here. The...
And I would like to note to everybody, that's a workshop. So there will be no citizen comments and no citizen discussion. This is a working session for council to, to discuss budget proposals. There will be future meetings where the, a more structured budget after these comments are incorporated with plenty of time for citizen input and citizen comment. But, but the next meeting, the only item on the agenda, will be the budget discussion with council.
Um, a couple of things have come up since, uh, the hurricane, as far as recovery. The Small Business Recovery Center, they have opened up a, a recovery center at the Marmo Plaza in Galveston. The hours are Monday through Friday, nine A. M. to six P. M. And then beginning on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, they'll start the open, they will start opening on Saturdays as well from nine, nine A. M. to four P. M. All that information is on our website. We've also, uh, put a link to it on our Facebook page. Um, the second part is individual assistance programs that the, that they have started making available. Um, again, that information's on our website, but if, uh, and to sign up, you go to disasterassistance.gov, or you can call one-eight-hundred-six-two-one-three-three-six-two. All that information's on the city website, um, but, uh, there are some programs that people can, people can apply for. And then, uh, really, I just wanna say, um, a real heartfelt thank you to our staff through this whole thing. They, they were truly amazing, um, very selfless, and there's some of them that were dealing with their own damage issues in, in their own properties, um, but they continue to be here every day to, to serve, uh, our residents and, uh, um, so I'm very thankful for that. Also for the, the volunteers. We had an army of volunteers, either, um, cooking food or, or picking up debris, opening your homes to, uh, to your neighbors that, um, didn't have electricity, so that, you know, that was wonderful to see. And then finally, I'd like to, um, offer condolences to a, a few of our staff who, during this time, uh, were dealing with the loss of loved ones. Um, Sergeant Chris Nolan, whose mother passed away as a result of, of the, uh, hurricane. Um, Tina Sepuentes, whose sister passed away, and, uh, Pam Jostlet, whose father just recently passed away. So they were, um, they were dealing with their own situations, but they were, they were still here to, to help provide for our residents. So, um, I'm standing for questions.
Nope. Good. All right, um, Chief Gerbey? Anything to add to your report?
No, I just, just wanna really say thank you to all the citizens that were very supportive during the hurricane, people that opened up their doors to feed my guys, to wash our clothes, uh, a soft drink. It was amazing to see the, the community come together. Uh, they were here around the clock, leaving their own belongings at home. I was one of them. My house had a bunch of issues, but our community was priority one. So, again, just the way everybody came together to support us is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Chief, have y'all received your tasers yet?
Though the first, uh, box came in with all the equipment that goes to it. We're waiting on the tasers to get here, hopefully in the next seven to ten days. Thank you for asking.
Okay, uh, Director of Operations, Robert Quintero, his report's attached. Uh, I would like to make a note for, for council on his report. He stated that arrangements are made at Moody Gardens for staff to evacuate if it's a one or a two. It's actually, critical staff intends to ride out a one, two, or three hurricane at Moody Gardens. Um, if it's a four or five, the plans are that critical staff will evacuate to the Hilton and College Station. Um, and we'll hope storms don't take out power there, because I know they, they had some power issues too. So, anyway, I would like to clarify that. Uh, to make sure everybody gets one, two, and three, we, we get to be accommodated at Moody Gardens. All right, and Fire Chief Baden isn't here, but as usual, he's provided a fabulous report summarizing, uh, recent activity. All right, next on the agenda is, uh, approval of the minutes. Uh, they've been posted now for, uh, two weeks. So, um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting on June twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four?
Mayor, I'll make that motion to approve.
Okay? Do I have a second?
I'll second that, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor, approval of the minutes is posted? Okay, thank you. Okay, next are our comments and reports from members of council. And, uh, what we're gonna start doing is we're gonna rotate who goes first. So, Taz, you're not first today, Brandon, you are. Next week, you'll be ready to go. Next meeting, you'll be ready to go first. Okay, so we're gonna start with Brandon.
Again, I just wanted to thank everyone for their, uh, fortitude during this, uh, storm. And as I mentioned on Sunday, I think this, even though it wasn't fun, I think it was a great storm to get at the time we got it because it showed us the issues we have in the city, and we were dealing with them only with the lack of power and not with, most of us, our houses being completely either blown away or blown down. So, uh, it allowed us to all still be here and deal with them instead of, uh, and trying to figure out how they are, uh, instead of, you know, also dealing with complete catastrophic loss. I also, uh, would like to thank, uh, the mayor and Councilman Rennick. I know, and others if I miss it, but I know that they were, uh, up to their shins many days over at the sewer plea, treatment plant, trying to keep that thing running. Uh, so thanks to them, and, uh, I believe they really helped along with city staff and Branch and others to, uh, make sure that our water didn't have to be turned off because that would've, uh, probably made things exponentially worse.
Okay, we got some. Thank you. Uh, I echo what, uh, Brandon said. I, I couldn't be more proud of the community. Uh, I saw a lot of, um, absolutely excellent and, uh, and inspirational things, right? Uh, neighbors helping neighbors. Um, particularly proud of, um, city hall staff. I think they did a fabulous job. They worked their tails off. Uh, in particular, uh, Kendall. I think, uh, every, every time I turned around and I saw him, uh, if it wasn't, uh, him, it was, uh, Fire Chief Kyle. Uh, if I turned around and I didn't see, um, Kendall, I saw Kyle. So it was the two Ks. Uh, Chief Gerbey, um, I wanted to thank personally as well. Uh, he rode out the storm in the neighborhood, so hats off to him, uh, for his diligence and his resilience, and he's still here to tell the story. So it was, it was pretty nasty out there, and, and he was making the rounds to make sure that everyone was secure and safe. Um, in addition to, uh, chief, I also wanna thank the, the police department, uh, who reports to chief in making the rounds, making sure that all the properties and, uh, uh, folks that, uh, who are in the community were safe. They were driving around all night long. I know this for a fact because I left the window open, and the lights woke me up every hour on the hour, so it was fantastic because that allowed me to check on the generator to make sure that it was working. So, uh, thank you for that, uh, lack of sleep and, and making sure that my generator was safe when, when it was running. Um, and again, the citizens, there's a great outpouring of support from them to, uh, to us, and, uh, just seeing the, the neighbors helping each other was, was fantastic. Um, in particular, right after the storm, uh, Russell Repertis, Frank Stark, and Brad South were mobilized and running around with gasoline and helping out neighbors. So I got to see that personally. I wanted to thank those three because they were kind of a band of pirate angels that were, uh, roaming the neighborhood. Also, uh, Rob McMillan, I couldn't thank enough because, uh, when I was at the treatment plant, he kept me from electrocuting myself and, uh, and gave some very, uh, very valuable advice. Um, and so when I called on him, he, he was more than gracious to, to help. So additionally, the folks at Branch, uh, they worked their tails off, you know? Sure I was there, but they, they really, really lost a lot of sleep and worked very, very hard for us. So if you see the Branch guys out there, please thank them because, uh, they were extremely helpful through this whole ordeal. And then, um, lastly, the volunteers at the barbecue event. Uh, we had a lot of politicians there. We also had, um, you know, neighbors that came out and helped pass out water, uh, along with city staff and, and some of the folks that you see here. So big thank you to everyone, and I couldn't be, you know, more proud of this community. Thank you.
Alderman Madre?
Well, thank you guys. Pretty great. You encapsulated everything. But I do wanna thank the mayor and our staff for doing just a, just a wonderful job. That's all I got.
All right. Well, I wanna thank everybody too. Everybody. Everybody. Um, yeah, it was just such a great opportunity. It's, um, not my first hurricane, but not Hurricane Ike, so I echo what Brandon said about the fortunate opportunities that we can have to leave, uh, under more severe circumstances. Um, in saying that, you know, I'm communicating, so I'm working on my air-focused area to make sure that when things get put out on the, uh, Jamaica Beach, the city of Jamaica Beach, uh, Facebook page, I'm getting that out to all the Facebook pages. We have seven of them, seven JB pages. Three of them are private, four public, so working to do that and make sure that, you know, everybody gets the news. I know that not everybody's on Facebook, but I do encourage everybody to, to check out the city website because it's there before it gets posted out to the city Facebook page. So, jamaicabeachtech, jamaicabeachtx.gov, and you'll make sure to check that out. People with their internet can check out the website. And, um, I enjoyed helping neighbors, as we all echo, just checking on people's houses, taking pics for neighbors. It was a really great opportunity to get to know more neighbors. I've got more Facebook requests, so, um, getting to meet more people, making sure that they were safe. And then, um, I enjoyed getting to, uh, tour the beach and the restoration beach tour with Mayor Bauer and, uh, Alderman Jones and our, um, the Galveston City Councilwoman, Marie Roth. That was a really great experience. I learned a lot more than I think I ever knew about beach, beaches, dunes, how the deterioration is so severe, and that was just a category one. So that was a real lesson, uh, a real good opportunity to, for me to learn more. So thank you, Mayor. And then, um, also, just wanna encourage people too. I know we've got all these resources that Kendall mentioned, but let's not forget too that you can also reach out to FEMA if you have some really severe damages. So, um, it's eight-hundred-six-two-one-three-three-six-two for FEMA and/or go to www dot disasterassistance.gov. So if anybody's still having those issues that they wanna, there's another resource. That's all I've got, Mayor. Alderman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Hurricane Barrel, you may have knocked us down, but you didn't take us out. I saw, like you guys, such extraordinary acts of kindness throughout our city with the neighbors helping neighbors and support. And I want you to show the, show me this. Our Melissa, she came over to my house in knee-deep water to bring me coffee the first morning. That's a real act of kindness. Would you just pass that over to her? Then me, then you get the back too. But we, we all did what we could. If it was bringing a cup of coffee, um, when I didn't have power or yet a generator, that was the greatest cup of coffee I've ever had.
You start bets.
Our police department and fire department went above and beyond with fearless and noble measures to rescue, serve, and protect. Thank you so much. And, uh, city staff, you did an incredible job. You were doing your own job plus taking care of other people, cooking hamburgers, Esther. The, uh, amazing that you were, were, were taking care of everyone who were here for the cooling stations too. And, um, the communication with the city. When, um, Kendall, you are a rock star because, uh, we got to see, we got to know what was going on, what was coming up next. When I was here with Ike, we had no communication. The only thing we had was to come up to City Hall and hope that some... The only thing we had was to come up to city hall and hope that somebody was giving out some kind of information. We might get three versions. But this time around, we knew what was happening if we had power, or we'd find out from a neighbor if we didn't have power. So Kendall and Gervais, and you guys did great with communication for that too. And Chief Gervais, I'm gonna borrow your mantra, Jamaica Beach Strong! Nobody mentioned that our Senator Cruz came to visit. Now, I'm a political junkie, so I was really tickled to be able to shake his hand. And what a nice thing for him to come and let us know that we're not alone. That our federal representatives were here, our state representatives here, Mace Middleton, Terry Middleton were here. And we supported each other with Galveston City. We were, we just are, make sure that everybody was informed and included. I hate to say it, but it really was a marvelous experience. Does that sound crazy? But to see how our neighbors took care of neighbors and how we all, I can't explain it. But, you know, we will recover. We have these all the time, and we will be better and stronger than ever. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
One last comment, I wanted to thank you personally as well. You heard the only person on the list that I forgot to thank, so thank you. I didn't feel like to thank you. This woman, I don't think she was ever home the entire time. Incredibly, so she did a great job, very proud of that.
Okay, next is old business discussion and consideration of new building permit fees. You should've all seen the write-up and the proposals. And for the three new council members, this was an item that was brought up in April. And the council had said they wanted more clarification, more description about why, rather than just putting fees out there to have a document that we could post that gave better explanation of what was needed and why. So do I have a motion to discuss the new building permit fees?
I'll make that motion as we discuss the new permit building fees.
Okay, go ahead, second. Okay, so really, this is an opportunity for y'all to question, ask for clarification. We're not voting on approving them at this time, that'll probably be at the next meeting, unless we have monumental clarifications we need. So does anybody? Kendall, I don't know if you want to give this council a rundown of kind of the basis and...
Yeah, I will try to.
Where we're at, where we need to go.
So really, what the, what kind of pushed us to the forefront was the fact that currently, the amounts we're charging for our permit fees, and also some of our planning and zoning fees are too low. It's, we're actually losing money through the inspection process, the administrative costs that we incur, that the current fees that we're charging are not covering our costs. We also thought this would be a good time to possibly streamline those and review to make sure we, a lot of new staff, to take a good look at them, to understand what we're charging and why. The previous, when we brought this up previously, the council was of the mind that they kind of wanted a little bit more as to when is a permit required, and some of those say so. This first, this first document Katie put together to try to briefly explain some of those things. It's hard to, hard to know really what level of detail they were hoping for. And as I said, we have a majority of the new council now, so this may not mean anything that is really what you were looking for. But this section does kind of help give an understanding of when are you going to need a permit and why. And the second part of it is actually the fees that you'll see, the current price that we charge versus what we are recommending. The couple of the biggest ones are right at the front. Currently, with new construction and remodeling, we charge a dollar per square foot. So if you're building a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot home, you're probably getting overcharged at a dollar a square foot, because that far exceeds what costs we have, even with, I mean, there are a lot of inspections involved and re-inspections, plan reviews, that type of thing. But if you're doing a five-hundred-square-foot remodel, then we're, then you're underpaying significantly for what our charges are. Because we contract with our building official for the inspections, for the plan reviews, for all that labor. So then those are set prices that we are charged, and we're just passing those costs along, and a little bit for administration. So we are recommending that you go away from the dollar a square foot, and we put set prices in based on what we project, the estimated amount of inspections that are going to be involved in a new construction versus a remodel. Part of that price is also a new fee that we put in, that we are recommending. And it is a road usage fee. And what it is, is try to help offset the cost of the heavy trucks that are going down our city streets. They're carrying, whether it's cement or building materials, you know, we see semis up and down our streets, which they're not meant to handle those heavy loads. So we wanted to add a road usage fee to try to help offset that and start putting some money aside to fixed bottles, things like, you know, some general maintenance.
What's that fee gonna be?
Pardon me, we're proposing for new construction to be five hundred dollars, because with new construction, there's going to be more of those types of trucks up and down versus a remodel. But we're also for like work on a bulkhead or a driveway, those type, any kind of concrete work, because concrete trucks are very heavy. So we're proposing that, and that fee is wrapped up into this eighteen-fifty, sixteen-hundred. So should you choose not to approve those, then these fees would reduce by those amounts. So, because that, those costs are already built into that, it's not an additional cost. So the eighteen-fifty would be thirteen-fifty, sixteen-hundred would be, would be fifteen-fifty.
Same with the permits, Paul, it would?
Well, the permits that we have here, those would not be, those would not be, those permits are built into this set price, yes. The permits that we would expect and an estimation of the inspections that it takes for, and the plan reviews that it takes for a project of those sizes.
How does this compare to Galveston?
I knew some of them were gonna answer that, ask that question. It's really hard, it's not apples to apples, because the way they structure their fees, I think they're relative. We did look at them, but if you were to go to Galveston's website, you won't see them rolled down like this. And so I can't tell you that an electrical permit costs two-hundred-and-fifty bucks. It's, it depends on what size amp service you have, and it may, it may go up from a hundred amps to, you know, three-hundred amp, and those types of things.
So they get it a little bit more granular in the council?
They do very. Yeah, it is, it is much more granular. And so this is, we're trying to keep it simple, I guess. But at the same time, we're not trying to make it, we're not trying to make money off of it. We want to cover costs. There are some administrative fees that are built into this. So, but that's also, we don't anticipate needing to change those, you know, anytime soon. Once we set these costs, I think we're going to be good for quite a while. But like I said, our costs have one enough, and so it's time to pass those costs on a little bit. I do have our building official David E. Wall here in the audience, I've asked him to come if he's much better at answering these specific questions. Also, Katie Farmer, our permit tech, she's kind of the one to put a lot of this together, but she's very good at asking some, or answering some of the more specific questions. Couple, there was one we added, house moving. We moved a house five months ago. We didn't, we didn't have any permit even thought of at the time. You know, so some of those types of things come up, and you're like, oh, we need that. One thing you'll see, swimming pools, that price did go up pretty hot. Went from three-hundred to five-hundred. And that's, that's based on, on the amount of inspections that are required. I think there's a minimum of five inspections on a swimming pool. So that, that one is kind of, kind of stands out. You'll see some of these that did not change, and that's because inspections are not required with some of those. So we felt the price of the permit was fine, because the permit does include the cost of inspections with it. And then on the bottom part here, this is, this is for replats, planning and zoning issues. And you're gonna see, looks like pretty significant cost increase here for like replats. That all has to do with the cost of posting notices in the newspaper. We have to have two, you have to have, you have to post two notices, and the cost of that is about three-hundred dollars each, each cost. So that's, that's really the cost that we incur, is just from the required postings in the newspaper. Again, working without a, without a permit, we're leaving that, we would double fees if you're not working without a permit. We're, we're gonna tag you, unfortunately, if you didn't get a permit, you're gonna double those fees. Katie, did I leave anything out that I should mention? David, did I? I think we would, maybe if you ask questions, maybe it would help, you know, help direct the conversation.
It seems like these, the average of this is a hundred percent increase on most lines, or even greater than a hundred percent increase. Is that much of an increase needed to kind of break even, save the NOS a little bit as well? When was the last time we were updated?
Twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty?
I couldn't answer that question.
We assumed there was a, there was a permit fee schedule posted on the website, and that document is dated twenty-twenty.
Right, January first, twenty-twenty.
But it was posted officially, Cam dug it out and found that it was actually posted on the website in twenty-one, right? May of, May of twenty-one? So even though the document says twenty, it was documented as posted on a website on twenty-one. So we couldn't find any reference to it in the minutes anywhere?
So we're saying this hundred, or greater than a hundred percent increase should keep us good for a while. Is a while just mean four years, or are we thinking longer?
I think it is much longer than that.
It would depend on inflation, though. I mean, it's based on.
I think it may depend on how long David wants to work. And, you know, but, you know, I think Katie aspires to get the certifications to be, to do inspections too. So if we were, if we were staff time, you know, maybe we would be much better off. But I do, I do envision this lasting quite a while, I think we would be safe.
The other thing too is David, because he's here, he actually is, I shouldn't say this, because we'll see a price increase tomorrow, but compared to going out to an official, there are companies that provide inspection services.
And we do, so we do utilize them in a backup capacity. For whatever reason, he likes to leave occasionally, so we do have contracts with firms that do some of our inspections that you need. And it is significantly higher than what David.
So if we're, if, when David decides to retire officially from all activity, he did just retire from the City of Galveston, he's still building and inspecting. But if we are dependent upon outside sources, then we might be coming for the increases again.
That could change it, but.
But we, basically, when we, when we look at the numbers, we've been losing money. When we look at the number of plan reviews required, inspections required, we've been losing money.
So even though that document's dated twenty-twenty, it may not be updated, it may not have been increased for many years prior.
Yep, yes.
They could have kept it the same, exactly, right? So, I mean, you run into this all the time, it's not usual to find out that, you know, you should've made incremental increases over time, and it's like, oh, ten years of S's.
Similar to a hundred building.
Among other things.
One, one thing I'd like to point out that I know I questioned a lot was engineering stamps required on things that have not been required in the past. And while that's not a permit fee, it is a cost to the residents to go acquire that engineering stamp. But that's required now on, and David, you might jump up and speak to that, because you can say it better than I can. As far as new residential code requirements on elevated, external elevated structures, right?
Anything structural requires engineering, whether it's a deck, whether it's stairs, guardrails?
If it's replacement in kind, if it's a full replacement in kind, typically that's grandfathered as long as it's not more than fifty percent of the entire structure. Right? You always have to bring anything new up to date?
If you're replacing the guardrails, handrails, stairs, decks, it's all structural and requires engineers to provide live loads and wind loads on those rails and those stairs and those decks. So big guys like me, once I get on there, it'll fall apart. And you deal with wind and flood here, so you want them to be there when you come back. You know, we had a storm just last week, you know, it may not have been as strong as we could've. But a lot of times, if you design it right, build it right, it'll be there when you come back. And that's the whole purpose, and safety.
David, how does replace, how can replacement in kind fit in?
Replacement in kind, you know.
It just really doesn't fit anymore, is what you're saying.
If it's structural, which.
If it's structural?
You have, you have to have a stamp on it, because there's loads required on that. You know, anybody can go back and build, I'm not saying it's not right, but there is a load requirement on those. And then the chapter three, there's a load table, the only one that can do that is an engineer. Any of those loads are certified by an engineer.
Thank you.
I have a question, but like, David, when you and I met before, like simply replacing a board. For instance, you have screws that rust out, and you need to replace some boards, that's not required.
Not deck boards or anything like that?
Okay, that, I just want clarification on that, because we get a lot of those where it's something that's been replaced, or, you know, they haven't held up because of our salt. Thank you.
So the top boards could be replaced?
Yes.
Well, not, not over certain percentage. If you replace more than fifty percent of it, then it requires engineering again, or just a permit?
A permit if it's over fifty percent.
Right, if it's just the fifty percent, then it's just maintenance, you know, replacing a few boards.
Right.
Placing a few fit tickets, we don't, we don't require a permit for that.
But if you, like what David said, the structure, if it's the railing, the stringers, anything like that's significant, that needs to be.
It's important.
And engineers.
So if I go, if I come to you and I say, okay, I need an engineer to print certified for a porch, let's say, and I go have it built tomorrow, and for whatever reason it falls apart ten years from now, can I reuse that same drawing? Because it's certified by an engineer to rebuild that with the same material?
You may be able to use the same drawing, but the engineer's stamp's over the year old, so you have to have a current stamp.
Okay, because the codes can change over time?
Yeah, the live loads can change, rail loads.
All right, no, that's good, thank you for the clarification.
Council knows, last year, we reached out to a local engineering. Council knows, last year, we reached out to a local engineering company and asked them to provide a quote on what it would cost to provide, could they provide us a blanket uniform set of drawings for a standard stair rail, a standard deck, a standard dock, external, not internal to the house? And they provided a quote, I think it was around four thousand dollars to, to do that. And they would specify under what conditions this applied, and we haven't moved on that yet because we've not really been able to ascertain with any good data analysis how many of these we get. So we would know what to charge a contractor or, or a citizen, so that if they were building a dock or replacing, you know, they were redoing their, their deck over their boathouse, right? They could purchase that set of drawings from us, as long as it met within the conditions of that drawing. And we were charging, you know, three hundred dollars, instead of them having to go to an engineering company and pay eight or nine hundred dollars to get that done. But we haven't had time to fully assess, would we lose money on that endeavor? And we're also not trying to make money on that endeavor, so we don't, we don't really have enough data yet to see if that's justified. So with Katie here cranking away and doing a great job, we'll probably be able to bring that proposal forward, or embed it within, you know, the budget somehow.
She said that's four thousand dollars, what's the cost to have a re-stamped every time?
Standard details.
Well, you don't have to get it, it will have to be redone every year, the engineering stamp's only good for a year.
Right.
And, and I, if codes didn't change, then it was going to be probably a marginal cost of, you know, like a thousand dollars to get that re-stamped. If the code changed, and they have to redo the drawings, then we'll probably look at it at the same amount again, so.
I got one thing that I may have.
Oh, sure.
Kendall, the one that I didn't see, and I don't know, is generators. When generator craze hit, a lot of our residents went out and got these generators, and they had to be on certain platforms. Had to be, you know, not only did the generator company have specifications, but the platforms themselves.
Yeah, and that's, that's right here on that, it's on there.
It's basically under the AC platform.
An engineer.
Katie said this is an AC platform?
Yeah, same thing, basically.
Yeah.
AC platform and generator platform.
So it has to be at the, at least the height of the first level before, has to be at least that high, to comply with your floodplain requirements. You're going to need a, very special, because people want to hang them up outside of the house. Or put them on the ground.
Some of them want to put them on their decks, you know, I know one, we had one case where we had quite a, before our last mayor, we had quite a situation. One of our residents actually had to take her generator down and redo the whole structure with engineers and redo it.
But that's pretty good.
Yeah, so I just thought I'd mention, maybe we want to include generators.
Yeah, yeah, we, we do have the list here.
But otherwise, I think staff and you guys did a great job on the clarifications, in, in layman, in just straightforward terms, where our people can understand what and why and what to do. I think it's really very good. And you picked up several things, not only the fill problem, I noticed you got into that, the fill and the roads and the driveways. Coverts may still be a problem, okay, but in some of the other documentation. Otherwise, yeah, thank you.
I have a question, because I'm learning about this, but, so you, you need to pull up line permit if you're replacing a dishwasher? Or is that something different? I'm, I'm just looking at the explanation here, the sink, the toilet, dishwasher, I just was curious, it's just, so I better understand. It was on the explanation pages on the bottom?
It's going back and forth, same connection to now.
Okay, I mean, if you're replacing the toilet, if you're replacing a dishwasher, do you have to get a permit pulled if you're doing it yourself, or if you're getting a plumber? To do it, that requires a permit to be pulled?
If it's your homestead, you know where you're going, you can pull the permit, otherwise a licensed plumber would have to pull it.
Okay.
Or an electrician too, depending on your dishwasher, unless you're.
Let's see, okay.
You know, the other thing on our pricing is remodel additions. Sixteen hundred dollars fits all, you know? You can get a small remodel, a big remodel, some have a one dollar per square foot. I don't know, I mean, you know, if I'm just going to add a bathroom, right? Sixteen hundred dollars.
If, if they weren't going to be doing HVAC.
One bathroom, yeah.
Right, let's say if they weren't going to be adding HVAC to the.
Come on up.
If they weren't doing HVAC, they were just doing a bathroom, and there was a light switch and a toilet, I would remove the HVAC portion of that, just decrease it by that much.
Okay, so there's a way to mitigate it.
Yeah, I guess this would be worst case scenario.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Kendall?
It's not, there's some judgment in here, and other ways to come out.
Yes, Katie does have that, does have that flexibility.
And can we put these numbers on, after it's passed, of course, on the city website?
And, and we will put this out, we will put this out.
Super, thank you.
Just want to follow up on Melissa's question. If I go to Home Depot, buy a toilet because my toilet is cracked, buy my wax ring, I have little bulbs on the floor, pull mine up, put a new one down, I'm, I need to have a permit for that?
That's, that's exactly what you're right there, because replacing a toilet is, I've actually helped my husband do that, so I didn't.
It, three weeks ago.
That just seems like to pull two hundred and twenty-five dollars just to replace that toilet that cost me ninety dollars.
Yeah.
That's, that's understandable, that's a good argument, and fair enough.
And, and how do we keep track of that, how do we know, I didn't interrupt you, Brandon.
That's okay, and a dishwasher, if it's already, if it's just a three-prong plug in that power wire, it's literally unplugged, pulled off.
Pulling out, push it back in.
Right, that's different.
Yeah.
It's when they're changing out wiring, they're changing out fixtures, significant, not just toilet. If they're redoing your kitchen sink, I would think then you would need to get a plumber involved. But as far as just a homeowner doing the toilet, but I would consider that an exception to the rule. I, I pulled that information off the Galveston website, and that's a good thing to point out.
So we can adjust that.
I think if we added more saying if the homeowner, because I'm wondering, how do we keep track of that? How do we know when people are doing their own toilet, their own dishwasher? Because we did replace our dishwasher last year, and it was literally, pull the old one out, put the new one in.
Well, if you, if you buy a new washer and dryer from Lowe's, and you pay the, you pay the hundred dollars to install it.
Yes.
Right, it's plugging in the dryer and screwing in the connection and sticking the, the hose in the deal. I would think we would need another two hundred, twenty-five dollar permit for.
There's going to be a lot of bandits out there, put it in the room.
I know, it's going to be one of those. But I just didn't know how to attract something like that. It's, well, in some ways, like when we bought our dishwasher and our, you know, we got some new appliances, they took the old ones away, so you're not going to see it by the curb, we took it away, so I thought, I would not have known to be able to pull a permit just to replace our dishwasher.
That's true.
Mr. McMillan has a question.
I, I got one question, I don't know if that or not, somebody mentioned homestead, you may know. I understood a long time ago, now laws may have changed from the city I grew up, if you were homesteaded and owned the property, you could do your own electrical, your own plumbing, you could do anything you wanted to do to it. It's only if you did not own the property, you couldn't do it for somebody else, or, does that make sense? So I don't know what the rules are, don't quote me on that, but is, is that?
But that, but that's not, that doesn't change the fact that if you was the homeowner, you might still need to pull a permit for that activity.
Uh, true.
Still have to pull permits, but it's, it's got to be a homestead. If it's, if it's rental property, then you have to hire a licensed person.
Yes, okay, okay.
But the same thing with.
If it's rental property, or if it's not your homestead, you have to hire a licensed mechanical, electrical, plumbing.
Yeah, that's a rule. So if we pull a permit doing plumbing, do we require, and we're homesteaded, we're doing it ourselves, does that require inspection from the city?
Yes, you start to have.
Still got to have inspection, okay, yeah.
Do you put it for plumbing?
For, for all.
For the dishwasher, or the?
No, it wouldn't be for that, I mean.
Or the toilet?
Yeah, if you're running any kind of gas, or sewer, or water lines, or van stacks, or underground, you know, that kind of stuff.
Okay, that makes sense.
I mean, if I put a new sink faucet, if I.
Get a permit for it, for it.
I agree, and, and if I have to put a new sink in, a sink fixture in, you know, because the, the valve started leaking, I, I wouldn't think I would need a, a permit to.
I'm not going to be knocking on the door.
But if you see, if I'm owning a dishwasher, all their other things.
That man is at your door asking you to use a restroom?
There could be a lot of toilet boxes in this basement for your life.
But I, I propose that we actually add some more detail to this, so that way, because people are going to ask these questions, especially we do, when we get to the part where we go, and we post this, they're going to go, you mean to tell me I bought a hundred dollar toilet? And I have to pay two twenty-five, so, so that's going to come up.
You had a lot of people just going in at night, you know, the dishwasher at night, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Not sent it out by the trash. That's right.
All right, next, on the, so we will clear that up a little bit and bring it forward again for discussion when we have it ready, I'm not going to commit to when it's going to come from.
Still very good work.
We can thank Katie for that.
Good job, Katie.
My attention.
Next on our new business is discussion, consideration, and take action to approve the bulkhead bid. Do I have a motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss the replacement bulkhead at the place where we're treating plants.
Do you have a second?
Okay, I'll second that, ma'am.
All right, Kendall, you want to?
Yes, ma'am, so obviously, this is, we're bringing it back, last time we rejected all bids and, and rebid the entire project. We did receive two bids. I have the information here, we have both the, have both the bids and as well as the, the bid specs. And I do want to, I do want to speak to something about the bid from Maves. Alderman McDermott asked me to reach out to them to clarify. As they are the bid we're recommending, for a total, stated total of one hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred, which is, they bid the last time, and it's just about thirty-two thousand dollars higher than the last time they bid. And when I spoke to, when I spoke to them, the reasoning behind that is because of the requirements we have for the backfill, to be, this was recommended by engineers, and we put in this language, that to be installed in level lifts, not to exceed twelve inches, and compacted by using mechanical means. They said that they don't typically do it that way, said mechanical means actually can, can damage your, can damage your panels, or compromise your panels when you're doing that. But to be able to comply to the specifications that we put out, that was, that was the cost of the increase in the, in the bid. Now additionally, as you will see on their bid, it says that they were still, they did not include the invoice, they did not include the amount of fill in that final price. He told me that the rule of thumb is ten loads for every sixty feet, so he said approximately twenty-two to twenty-five loads, which is approximately eight thousand additional dollars. And, and so I, I did clarify in those regards, so however, he said if we were, if we were willing to lessen the restrictions as far as, as how the, the backfill takes place, and not, and not require the, the excessive manual work as far as putting it in lifts and, and packing it, that they could adjust the price below it to be able to include the, the fill in the final price. So that's the information that I have in regards to, to the bids that you're seeing. I said, I only received two bids, one substantially higher. This one, I still would recommend that we move forward with Maves. I think he's more than qualified, and, and even after we, even after we scrapped the last bids, we still didn't get any, we didn't get any rebids even from the ones who complained about it. So I was a little, I was a little disappointed in that regard. But I, I guess I would, I would stand for questions, I mean, you know, I, I said, I am not an expert on, on bulkheads, so the, the specifications that we put forward were, were presented through our engineer, Lynn engineer. So that's where, that's where we got the, the specification for how the backfill was to take place. But according to Maves, that is not typically how that's done.
So just so we're clear there, are they offering a deduct in the price to do it the way that they want to do it versus the?
Yes, they said it would, there would be a deduct now. He did not give, I talked to the secretary, and he did not give back to me before the meeting tonight to know what that amount would be. But outside of that change, and a, and a small fee for a bond, a big bond, which is a couple hundred bucks, there's no, there's nothing really to equate to the thirty-two thousand dollar jumping price. And so I would.
Other than it's been, it's been seven months.
Yeah, now it's longer, and you know, prices adjust, and, and, you know, we are asking for a, a completion within, you know, a certain timeframe. So that, that factors into it, but what I would recommend is, is authorizing me to negotiate with Maves to, to get this project done, and I would like to think that we would come in under that quoted amount of one eighty-eight five hundred.
Is Lynn engineering going to inspect this course and manage it?
They are not, no, they provided us the specs.
Yeah, those specs are basically, basically structural foundation specs. And okay, it's really that point, having built three of myself, and as it is saying, same, that's on the ball, right? So maybe consider taking the thirty-two grand, and getting lots of the rest, with the rest of that.
Oh, if we could get him to honor his first bid.
Or just not, he included extra mechanically compacted, but that's.
He said, he said it's, he said it's very labor intensive to do it. To do it, and lifts, and stuff, he said it was more manual packing, manual packing, things like that.
I read that on the construction, he's got, he's got construction joints and expansion joints.
Oh, yeah, that would be.
I didn't see it on Maves, I saw all those joints on.
On the cap?
Yeah, I saw them on the branch cord, I didn't see any expansion joints, I'm sure they're going to put.
Yeah, every picture does.
But I didn't see them on his quote, I assume that's just.
You can, you can look at it more, I'm out of it now.
So was, the concrete cap, we did require that no greater intervals than fifty feet for the expansion joints.
I think, you know, they'll do a good job backfilling it, and they do do good work. And, you know, maybe consider waving the twelve-inch lift. And, you know, wait, maybe consider waiving the twelve inch lift.
The twelve inch?
Twelve inch lifts, every twelve inches.
Oh.
They have to compact it.
Okay.
And it's sand, fill it in at eighty percent.
Yeah, that's true.
Alright, any other discussion? Do I have a motion to approve City Administrator Francis, Kendall Francis, negotiating with Maves for a price reduction based on removing the mechanical compacting?
Twelve inch lift and mechanic.
Right.
Uh, and then, you know, negotiating and approving the contract with Maves for the bulkhead and the wastewater treatment plant.
I'll make a motion for City Administrator Francis to negotiate and move forward with the bulkhead replacement for the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, do you have a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor of, as stated previously? Okay, thank you. Okay, next is discussion, consideration, and take action to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight prohibiting wake on flooded streets. Do I have a motion to discuss?
I'll make that motion to discuss.
Alright, a second?
I second.
Alright. We discovered during Alberta that we didn't have a means to, uh, that the police didn't have a tool to encourage people or, uh, require people to drive safely through flooded streets. And, uh, we, Kendall, put, put this together. So, any comments?
I don't see any downside to it.
Chief, are you okay with it just written?
We need it, this man, he did a good job, put it together.
Any comments?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh eight prohibiting wake on flooded streets?
I'll make that motion there to, um, approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash eight prohibiting wake on flooded streets.
Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor of approving? Alright, we're unanimous, thank you. Okay, next is discussion, consideration, and take action to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh nine enabling STR, the short-term rental booking platforms, to remove listings that do not have valid registrations and to collect the local portion of the hotel occupancy tax. Do I have a motion to discuss?
Make a motion to discuss.
Okay, go second.
I'll second that.
Alright, so, uh, the most common platforms, uh, Pam, how many platforms does this?
Airbnb, Booking.com, TripAdvisor, and, uh, Airbnb.
Okay, and your, your estimate would be that we, that about, what, ninety to ninety-five percent of the bookings occur on those sites?
Probably.
Uh, they're the majority ones, unless somebody has their own platform. So, so what this is, is, um, we have to pass an ordinance and these platforms agree then to execute our ordinance or adhere to our ordinance. So, we will provide them a listing of our valid registrations. They compare those registrations against their listings and if a listing is not on our list, right, on our, uh, spreadsheet of approved registrations, then these sites will remove that listing. So, uh, you know, it's just another compliance tool that keeps people here honest. If they don't register or if for some reason they violated our ordinances and they're on a temporary hold or their permit has been withdrawn, then they can't list on these platforms. And then the other part of it is these same platforms, they will collect the hotel occupancy tax, the city's portion. They already collect the six percent state portion and remit that directly to the state. This would be remitting our nine percent for the, for Jamaica Beach and remitting it directly to us. The, the pros to that is that people can't be dishonest about how much they've really rented and how much they've collected. It will, it will come to us if they book through these platforms. The, the negative to it is, is we don't know who's paying and not paid. It comes in one lump sum check. So, uh, if for instance, there is a, well, Sand and Sea.
Every thirty days?
It's every quarter. It's a quarterly payment. Or, well, they would-
I don't know, it may be monthly.
It may be monthly or half. Um, it'll be at a minimum quarterly, it might be remitted to us monthly. But I'm just using Sand and Sea as an example. They have their own platform, right? So if you call up Sand and Sea and say, "I need a house for this many people on this date," right? Sand and Sea might book through their own individual system, right? And then, we wouldn't know about that per se and we wouldn't know that for this many stays, we didn't get money. It would be up to them. Sand and Sea's a very honest reputable. They will remit the money to us on behalf of themselves. We have no reason to believe they won't. But there are other rental agencies that might use this. We might be cheated out of a little money because people don't report if they book on their own platforms. But, but overall, uh, they will, the money will come to us. And if we look at what we've lost so far in not collecting the money, what did Galveston see, a thirty, forty percent increase in revenue?
Well, yeah, the first year, they saw thirty, uh, I'm pretty sure it was more than fifty percent.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, I thought it was more than that, uh, increase in revenue from, from doing this. So, uh, like I said, uh,
And then we still have the option, um, to audit so that we can go through, actually what Galveston does, which are things great. They just kinda do a lottery system and they pull out so many, ten or twenty of them, and they go ahead and do an audit for them. So they, Ms. Johnson, did you have a?
I would, I, I, I would be recommending that everybody still has to do a report every time. Yeah, and they'll report what, you know, what was automatically taken out, what was booked outside of those systems. And then there's a transitory period where, um, they're gonna be going through, where some of them will be, uh, would have been taken out, some of their bookings won't, so they're gonna have to count them all out.
Yes.
Uh, so, that's-
Yeah. This is in the ordinance that they have to, to file for every quarter, right?
Yes, it is, it is.
And we would continue that.
And we would continue that.
And actually, we will add to it. We have to get more granularity.
Yeah, great.
Believe the exact language, which I agreed with, room receipts collected outside of the quarters that participate in this automatic collection process. Room receipts for bookings made prior to October nineteenth, twenty twenty, twenty four, where hot is not automatically collected and remitted to the city of Jamaica Beach. And room receipts for bookings made on or after July nineteenth, twenty, October nineteenth, twenty twenty four, where hot tax was automatically collected and remitted to the state, which I agree with.
Yeah, just to clarify that, how this is gonna work, is if it's approved tonight, then ninety days from now, uh, because it takes the platforms ninety days to, to get this going. So, and we may, you know, ninety days from now is the nineteenth of October. We may choose to pick the date of November first, just to be clear. So let's, for this example, we'll just pick November first. So what will happen is that anything that's booked on November first on, uh, will have this automatically coming out. If I booked something today for next July, it's not gonna come out. So there's gonna be, you know, part of everybody's bookings is gonna have automated collection, a part's not. So that's where it's gonna be kinda confusing for a while, so, but, um, but once we get through, like, the next year, then it'll all even out.
And I think we can put that, I, we'll have to look at it a little closer, Brandon, that I feel that the, the audit piece of our hot tax ordinance, as well as how our existing STR ordinance is written, as far as needing to, needing to remit and provide documentation for payment, I think we can just add the clarity that we, we need it specified this way. I think that's within the scope of our ordinance as it's written. We'll have to look at it from that perspective, can we require that language that for now? And I think we have the flexibility within the ordinance to say how we want that submitted, right? If, if it's required that it's submitted, we're just gonna tell them in this format.
My other question is, this sounds good, but to me, it doesn't seem like it's in the platform's interest to take down a listing because every listing up, they're getting the fees from. So, I don't understand why they would work with us voluntarily to remove an income stream from their whole platform.
They aren't volunt, it isn't voluntary.
But we can, we can force them to take it down, they're not gonna argue with us over every single one of them, okay?
No, I, I agree with you, I, I don't know why they're agreeing to do it. I-
I think they were forced to.
It's a struggle, ma'am.
Yeah, why would the platforms do that?
Those guys are much more suited, isn't it?
First of all, it's state law for the platforms to collect the six percent.
Right, that part's, that part we get.
Yes.
Of removing the listing because they're not registered.
And, um, uh, and actually, I've just not heard any, attending the STR task force, I've not heard any, any questionable things about, um, the platform complaining about it, they've just complied. Is it because we would have an ordinance that for, it's a law?
It's a law.
It's law, they-
And, you know, one more thing is the four platforms that participate, they do it all in the same day. So they coordinate amongst these, you know, amongst, because they wanna all be doing the same thing to everybody on the same-
At the same time. They wanna have, maintain their reputation, they wanna follow me.
Yeah. But I think our budget for this year is- Well, we do know listings are down. So, um, as, as we look at budget for next year, you know, knowing we're gonna get all the money allocated, we'll probably still budget the same amount, uh, expecting we're gonna get it all, even though there's probably less to get because bookings are down.
And they don't invoice that, and so after the stay, or do they, do they actually pay upfront for days?
It's after this one.
So they get invoiced for the total then, so if, if I were to book something twelve months from now, I'm not paying and we're not gonna get the revenues until after that.
Till you stay, yes.
Just like the owner doesn't give it until it's, I say.
Right, right. Because I'm just thinking about, you know, if they, they book this and it's twelve months in advance and they're on the naughty list, and then, you know, during that period, does that, does that interfere with it? You know what I'm saying? Because it doesn't, because they'll actually be there for that stay during a period, because it's already booked, right?
Well, what happens is that, you know, they, um, if they, for instance, if the registration number isn't on the, on the ad and they're, um, and they, they have to take it down, then those people who are staying in, in next year, they're like, where's my, where's my property, you know, that I'm staying at, where's my rental? And they'd call the owner or the manager and then they wanna hurry and get that settled pretty quick so they've got, got appetizing bits, bits out there. So, it, it, the fix happens pretty quick.
No, there is gonna be, that's what Pam pointed out, there is gonna be that gap where people have booked something now for the future and if they look before the go-live date on the platforms collecting taxes for us, then that tax won't be automatically held and sent to us. And that's why what Brandon read you was, we will send out a form that says, "We need your receipt submitted in this way." So yes, people can still cheat on those homes that-
It better work itself out as you go.
It will.
But what you were saying is actually not the tax related, but if they book it in years from now, and even as it gets pulled off the site, they're not paying, can they still stay at the rate, at least? That's correct.
Well, they would have to go, I mean, Airbnb won't manage it, that won't manage the booking and manage the collection of fees and all that.
So they'll eliminate it and the, the booking through them will be eliminated with it.
Unless that's per, the person, the owner, maybe does it a different platform?
I don't know, what happens if, if they pull the listing, do they still honor?
They're gonna have to ask, that's a-
That's what I was curious about.
Do they still have to honor all?
What's the, what's the experience for the, for the guest, what's the experience for the owner?
Yes.
So, and, and current feature? So, but I just, I do know that when Galveston did this, they, we talked to somebody that worked there at the time and they said their phone was ringing off the wall the day they implemented it, because everybody got knocked off.
Because they weren't registered.
And they weren't registered and all of a sudden they're wanting to register. So, you know, there's gonna be a lot of communication you need to do with the community about what they need to do to prevent a, a stoppage in their, in their business.
Right, okay.
Okay, any other?
Well, yeah, I was saying, you know, the quarterly thing, but really it's ninety days and everybody's going to ninety days. Most all businesses are riding money for ninety days, you know?
Well, then I don't know if it's monthly, right, right now, the state requires every quarter, we require quarter.
Quarterly is like ninety days, really, three months.
Yes, we just don't know what the platforms, how often they remit that.
The platforms do it, um, what? I, I think they do it after every booking.
I don't know, it, they might.
I think it's after every single booking.
Because that's, I hope when they pay, I'll find that out.
Okay, alright, we can find that out. I mean, it, it, in some ways, it'd be nice if it was just monthly or quarterly, it's less accounting, less, less tracking of funds deposits for Esther. Esther's going, "Wait, this is supposed to make my life easier."
No, I'm sorry, let me clarify, to the owners, when they, when they pay the owner, they get it after every booking. I think to the cities, Pay Terry said, I think it was monthly.
Uh-huh.
That, that's what I remember.
Yeah. Anyway, I, I would think it's monthly or monthly. Okay, any other, any other comments or discussion? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-four dash oh nine enabling this here two platforms to remove listings that do not have valid registrations and to collect the local portion of the hotel occupancy tax? Do I have a motion to approve, on the vote?
I'll make the motion to approve and vote, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-four oh nine enabling STR book platforms to remove listings that do not have valid registrations and to collect the local portion of the hotel occupancy tax.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of twenty twenty-four dash oh nine? Alright, so we have a second.
I think it worked for Galveston, probably worked for us.
Okay, next is, um, discussion, consideration, and path forward for even infrastructure improvements. Um, so, I do have a motion to discuss.
I'll make that motion to discuss the infrastructure projects.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, this is really just kind of a brainstorming session and, and after the past two weeks, uh, possibly has changed a little bit. Kendall, if you wanna pull up, we've, we've been pursuing, uh, two different options. So when, when I presented to council a couple of weeks ago about the options and we basically decided not to sell our assets to someone and, and also that bonds were probably not a valid option, we started looking at, okay, if we wanted to progress with the funds we have and, and what would we do? So, we got two quotes from Lynn Engineering. Uh, one is to engineer the entirety of the waterline replacement requirements. So, in the past, we, we've chopped it off into five little projects and your engineering and project management costs go along with that. And you also have to pay mobilization and the bidding of each project. So, we were looking at, if we had the whole thing engineered, then we could carve out those project scales as we had budget and manpower to do it. And we brainstormed, uh, Gills looked at it a lot, Kendall's looked at it a lot, Aaron's looked at it, uh, you know, possibly carving it into three larger projects, three or four, kind of seems to make sense. So, uh, we got a quote from Lynn Engineering for three hundred and fourteen thousand four hundred dollars to, uh, to, to do the entirety of the remaining engineering. And, uh, we validated with TCEQ that the engineering and the, they would go on and submit the drawings and get approval from TCEQ. and get approval from TCEQ. And that approval is good indefinitely. So it's not like it expires. So once we had the whole engineering done, we could look at, at how it worked, what the, what the optimum size of the next projects are. And then the other thing we've looked at is right, right, we talked about this before, right now, our city is not looped. So the water comes in at Buccaneer by the post offices, and then it splits and goes to all the houses. Well, you basically double your flow if your city is looped. We're still limited on what the meter can deliver, but if it went down and looped the whole city, then at any given point, you have water coming from two directions. So from a hydraulic load perspective in your system, when that water can flow two ways, you've got access from two ways. And, and really unless we had every single fire hydrant open, you wouldn't, sorry, I'm gonna be an engineer anyhow, you wouldn't pass critical velocity going through that meter. If you ever passed critical velocity going through that meter, then the loop system wouldn't give you any more flow. But as long as you're not past that critical velocity, having a loop system doubles your flow access. So fire hydrants throughout the city then can be fed from two different ways. And anyway, so it really does enhance our firefighting capability. So looking at that, we had Lynn Engineering do a proposal on putting a water line under the main canal. There's currently a sewer line that runs from the end of West Bayside Drive where we just did the lift station. That sewer line goes under the canal and comes up at the sewer plant. So we would be looking at somewhere over there, we've not talked easements yet to any of the owners. There's several houses that it looks like very viable or aren't pools or, or anything against the easement. So we would go basically from where Bayside Lift Station is, cause there's a six inch water line that runs there, we would go under the bay and come up where the house burnt down, right? And then that six inch line would wrap around. And now the entire city would be better looped with, with additional water flow. Any other comments on that, Kendall?
No, I don't think that's.
So when, when we were looking at laying out overall projects for infrastructure, my original thought, and after talking to people and understanding the system better all the time, when I gave the review a few weeks ago, my proposal was to, to spend down our funds and do all the water. Because we spend money every month fixing water. So we would start reducing those repair costs as we go, which would give us more money to fix our sewer system. But after visits from Alberto and Barrel, and in understanding how critical our manholes are, critically bad they are. We, you know, as we work our strategic plan in our next session, right, we'll look at how we want to carve out priorities. You know, it might be we only do one chunk of the water first while we dedicate more of that spend down money to fixing our manholes and getting our generators where they need to be. But then we still have it engineered and, and ready to implement those projects whenever, however we wanted to carve it out. So I think, I mean, personally, my recommendation is still to approve these two options. The, the increased flow pressure firefighting capacity we get by looping the city, I think is worth doing and worth doing now. The only potential reason to postpone it would be, as we've had discussions about engineering, all of it, we get sections in the neighborhood where we're gonna, it's gonna be hard to comply with new TCEQ rules without, once again, looping. And the only way to loop is to put another line under the canal. We can't, right now, we loop by going down one side of a street, coming back on top of the sewer line on the other side of the street. That's not allowed anymore. So we can't go down and back on the same street. We don't have enough easement or depth options to, to loop in our, in our easements and, and with the dirt. I mean, we just, TCEQ won't let us do it. We can't get that close to the sewer line. And we're not gonna dig up the sewer line and replace it. So.
Does that require more trips under the canal or?
Yes. No, that's just it. It might require more trips under the canal. So.
For a box stand.
It. That's right. We gotta go underwater to loop to another street, right? So the only potential savings, you know, if we, if we chose to not do this loop as an independent standalone project, is you might save the mobilization cost for the, the boring machine that would go under the canal. If you brought them out and designed your project such that every place you possibly needed to bore under a canal, you did it all at once, there would be some savings there. Probably not a huge amount, maybe $10,000, $15,000 in mobilization cost of boring equipment. But, but there is that potential savings. And of course, if we look at engineering the whole thing, then we would also get the savings on how we carve it out to optimize what we're doing, when, under what project. So like I said, my, my recommendation at this point would be to approve the loop. We had a million dollars in the budget this year for water projects. We've spent 330 from the phase we did. So, so there is money in the budget for water. But most of this money, we'd have to carry portions of that forward into next year, that million we budgeted for this year. Because by the time they engineer it and we did it, even the loop project, we probably wouldn't be executing till October. And then the engineering, they estimate it taking six, seven, eight months? To do the entire thing. So here again, if we approved it during this budget cycle, we still, a lot of the funds, we would have to move forward to next year's budget.
So is your recommendation to be pass under the canal from West Bayside to where the house burnt down?
Yes.
Or is your recommendation to do all of the needed?
No, our recommendation is to do this one standalone. The improvements we get, well, I feel will justify that standalone cost. Then we engineer the whole thing.
Sure.
Right? And then once we engineer the whole thing, simultaneous to that, we'll be working getting bids for a new generator at the sewer plant. We'll be, we'll be looking at exactly what it's gonna cost to get the other side up and running. We've got some preliminary estimates, but not enough to bring it forward yet. And, and, and understand the whole, you know, we need to investigate more into manhole remediation, right? And, and I don't know if y'all remember or not, but I had, what did I have, $600,000 estimated in manholes? Was it 900 plus? I think I had put in, we have about 100 big manholes with lids. And the price I got for a branch, which I'm not gonna out to anybody else, is about $5,000 a manhole. By the time you actually have to fix some manholes, raise them, and then the composite lid themselves that are water tight. So, you know, where we fit that in against water, that's a decision we'll have to put together. And then the other thing that throws into this equation is from what we've been told, and, and Kendall's doing a lot of research on this, there's a strong potential that we can get some BMO mitigation money. But mitigation money can only be awarded based on a project to be spent. We can't spend the money on manhole recovery and then get reimbursed for it. It has to be a project and then we can get money to execute that project. So then we're talking about two years away before, by the time mitigation money comes down, we apply for it, we get it, we bid the project and we go do it.
Yeah.
Right, Kendall? We're probably looking two years from being able to start manual recovery.
Yeah, it's, it almost six, six months to 12 months before the money can be.
That's right. Before it's even really allotted and available. And then you have to apply for it and then you have to, to figure out how much of it you're gonna get and, and apply for. So we're still working forward on critical manholes behind. Because the, the amount of floodwater inundation we have this time, oh, pretty nasty. So I mean, that's just kind of an overview. We'll be bringing forward. But I kinda wanted, you know, it's like, if this doesn't sound feasible, just nix it now and we'll go to, we'll, we'll go to what to bring forward to council next?
I don't blame we're having this discussion.
Well, that's why we're having it. I don't want people to waste time doing stuff.
Yeah, it is, it is quite complex and it's a lot in it. You know, hopefully, I mean, we had our strategic planning workshop. We're gonna get back into this.
We are.
And make this part of it.
Yes.
Where we actually set our priorities.
Yep.
And we list each project. And we looked at it in terms of our spin of what you're saying, like five years, I think. Is that what you're telling me? Five years? So when we do that, I think we'll be more comfortable with our decisions. As far as the stuff about looping and all. Again, it's always in the details, right?
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, we're talking hydraulics. Are you talking about actually we're gonna, gonna do a?
No, we're not gonna model the city. No. We don't need to, Gil. TCEQ has their minimum guidelines that you have to meet.
No, we need their guidance, but I mean, our problem is volume, right?
Price.
No.
So, I mean, the models I'm used to seeing process model, right?
Yeah, it, it doesn't, because TCEQ usurps any of that. The optimization that you would gain from doing that modeling doesn't apply in a TCEQ world. TCEQ says you have to have this minimum, this minimum size.
Yeah, and that's what we meant.
Right. And so we can't do that on some streets because it, I mean, we might be able to come in with six inch pipe to do it, but even then, TCEQ says you can't have so many taps in a given length of.
Yes, but we met all the requirements so far.
So far, but we have areas. Go out, go out to, I don't know, which one is it?
It's gotta be minimal.
And there's about three spots.
Three spots.
And, and your street's one of them.
Well, yeah, it was never taped.
No, but the length of those streets.
Yeah, but it, it still has the old pipe, right?
Yeah, but under, under new situations, it's too many taps for TCEQ rules to dead-end it.
But there are two things and then there, I'm just saying that. We're gonna go into this planning thing and we're gonna look at this stuff and.
Yes.
And, you know, we've already, I'm just, I've just gotta be real comfortable with that looping is really necessary in terms of volume.
But when we get in, the good thing about is if.
Really.
If you looked at, if you looked at the proposal, did they, did they pack it? The good thing about what Lynn has proposed, and I should make two comments here. First of all, as they proposed it, there are stops and checks in three different spots. They do a preliminary report where they outline the overall. Then, then there's the next step and then there's the final report. So.
Yeah, I saw their approach.
In each of those steps, we have the opportunity to brainstorm on optimization opportunities.
I understand, I understand, I understand.
To get the, to get the final design.
The same thing they did with this whole thing.
The other, the other thing I should say is, you know, we need to discuss, I'm, I'm comfortable so sourcing to Lynn Engineering. Our procurement policy allows it. They got a heads up on understanding the system, which gives us cost savings. I'd also say that if the proposed price versus our budgetary estimate on laying new projects, this is about a 5% cost for engineering. Now, remember, it's straight engineering, it's not project management. I don't feel we're gonna find anybody else that can.
No, I think they'll give us the best price. They have the right, they, they, I mean, they already did half of it.
Right.
The only, the only change is this under this submarine pipeline. And does that really give us $200,000, $300,000 more of whatever?
We'll, we'll discuss that.
I think it's more on pressure than it necessarily is on flow. I think, I think the benefit you're gonna see more is on pressure than you will necessarily flow. And in that case, it's more life safety, the firefighting.
That's one, that's one.
So I, I absolutely.
Well, are we adequate now?
Barely, barely. We.
You know, I don't, I don't have Chief Bead in here to speak to that.
I have to ask crucial questions to explain, you know, half a million dollars, you know?
Well, it's $200,000.
That's what.
The looping will.
What, what is normal, what is normal?
If they would do it for 200 pounds of long sun and sign it today.
That's their estimate on the cost.
I believe, I believe 20 pounds of minimum firefighting potential.
What, what is?
I don't know what our pressure would run at here. I, I'm not being told. I guess we, we just flew a test and got here for the new restaurant. It was about 57 pounds.
Wow.
And that was.
And there's no way to loop this thing?
Not, not the way we're constructed.
That, that meets these requirements. Cause I know we can look at here at the back, what we did not do, this crossover tie right off into Buccaneer.
No, we tied in, we tied in the Long Jolly Roger. We added a tie point with this pro, with this last project that, that helped. And, and yes, as we get into further engineering, we will loop more places. But, but we have the whole end over water that there's no way to loop unless we put, put a tie in under the canal. Is it gonna loop at 100%? No. The only way we loop 100% is to put another meter at Bob Smith, right? And that's on the long-term proposal too, is to put in a second meter at Bob Smith. But, but we might not need it, you know? We might find once we do.
If this is cheaper and it knows the same thing, great.
Yeah, but, but just putting in a meter at Bob Smith, is it gonna help us in the back end from a looping perspective?
You think we have to vote?
I, I think the one under the canal gives us the most benefit to where we have the most problems right now. And then three years from now, four years from now, once we get all of our new water lines constructed, then we will determine if a meter at Bob Smith is gonna add additional value.
It will begin, it will begin again.
Yes, it will. Okay, so basically this discussion is just this, the discussion to see where we wanna go and how we wanna progress. And we'll, we'll work it to the next level of detail and see if these two items are both bringing to a, to a separate vote in, in front of, of other projects. See how they align that. Okay, next is discussion and consideration of alternatives.
Can I do a two-minute recess?
You can. But I'm gonna go on. We just won't start. Do I have a motion to discuss alternatives for beach trash collection?
I make a motion, we discuss affirmative to the stinky beach crash problem.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we're waiting for Brandon. What's the jeopardy deal?
Is it okay to ask a question right now? I'm concerned that I don't have a fire hydrant nearly close to my house. I live at the very end of Bob Smith. Is there, who should I talk to about checking that, that distance of where, where fire, fire hydrant should be?
I get Chief Bead in a call. He's got a layup in the city and I thought all homes were compliant with, with a required distance.
That's really far.
Let's, let's check, let's check that with him.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we've heard home residents, you know, we removed the dumpsters on the beach and we put a roll-off dumpster at the sewer plant. And so it would be nice to find another alternative. Or nowhere in the city should. Uh, nowhere in the city should we be holding trash. So, uh, at the moment, we haven't. I know you're real happy here, I mean. We have a, uh, signs up on the beach due to the hurricane. We're not picking up trash. Uh, yeah, well, apparently the signs say pack it in, pack it up. But same, same general idea, uh, that we're not picking up trash. So that the effort that our crews and we use.
We don't have a problem.
Huh? We, I mean, so, so for an interim, we'll see what that is. Uh, I know one, one idea I've brainstormed and we have to run the numbers a little more is, you know, can the city buy a dump trailer? And we haul trash directly to the transfer station. We, we pick it up and we haul it out of here the same day. And, uh, you know, what does that look like? The problem with that is then we have to find another alternative for Saturday afternoon and Sundays. When no landfill or, uh, transfer stations available. That's when we collect most of our trash. So looking at getting a third-party hauler to come in on those days and they take it to wherever they take it.
How does Galveston handle that?
Well, Galveston has a whole industrial area over there on Harborside. So their park board sends a trash truck and trash trailers down the beach. And then it, it sits there till Monday morning when they either haul it to one of the landfills on the mainland or they, uh, take it to the transfer station. So, but they've got industrial locations to put it. We only have residential areas to put it, so.
At least something for them.
I mean, that might be an option. Uh, then we have to buy two dump trailers, right? Because on a weekend, we would definitely collect.
Yeah, we just spread it out. What else, what else do you?
What about, um?
Where are we headed?
No, I, we're just discussing what are options that could work.
On our east side, the state park is doing something with their trash. Immediately on our west side, park board's picking up that trash. Is there any way to partner with either of those entities to just help school up our, like, twelve extra?
We have, we have, we just have the park board to see if they would be interested in that. We told that they would need to, uh, throw it up there, channel it and, and, uh, it would get back to them. So we did inquire about it.
And we'll, we'll push, we'll push, if we could get the park board to do it, I mean, that would be the ideal. Uh, just when you're, when you roll out around the state park, just roll back in on fifteen mile roads and sixteen mile roads, right?
Yeah, the, uh, we did scheme to the park, um, as well.
State park?
Yeah, they, we did not ask them directly, but they did not, they did not even hint that that would be something they'd want to do. I don't.
Also, they, uh, their volume is a fraction of ours, right? And, uh, and they have lots of dumpsters throughout and their dumpsters are picked up. They have enough dumpsters and enough space kind of away from where campers and RVers are. That, uh, they store their trash till it gets picked up and they have space to do it. It doesn't impact the, the quality of the stay from their campers and RVers. So, uh, plus they have a different style of trash can, a trash dumpster. They're the, they're the kind that more seal and close and probably the smell and garment is, is not as much as an open dumpster. And we did opt to not go with those more closed kind of dumpsters. Because when they get picked up, it's like four in the morning and it's noisy, noisy, noisy when they get picked up. And in the summertime, they have to be picked up every day. So, uh, and we wanted it picked up every day just for smell and, uh, just accumulation of trash to make sure we didn't overfill it. But then at, at four AM, you would have this ding 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 ding, you know, real loud going off every day. So, uh, we thought that would be very annoying to anybody who would be close to it.
I don't think not having trash cans is an option, but I am curious to see how the beach looks after this weekend when there's none. Also, uh, just kind of side topic, I went down there yesterday and that sign had blown over. I could get back up, but we might want some more of those. On the barrels, yeah, they blew and blew over our pickup today.
How do we minimize our problems that we've got down there now? Is there anything we could do until we get this fixed to make it better? Before it stinks and whatever?
Right now, we're just not collecting it, right?
Yeah, we're not collecting.
I don't know, you know?
I mean, we're gonna try it and, uh.
And we're gonna fix it, obviously, but is there something we can do?
How do we, how do we encourage more for visitors and to, to take their trash with them? I mean, are we up to, that our, that our police officers are now asking people to pick up their trash up there?
Yeah, like I told her, I just gotta be honest with you guys. That's asking a lot from my officers.
Yeah.
You already got a lot of trash packed in. Now I gotta ask them to be the litter police when there's hundreds of people on the beach. And, and here's a former district attorney right here, if they don't see it, you know, even though it was parked next to their vehicle, they can't go and stop someone. They should take it where they thought they left them. You literally have to see them throw it down. And remember during the week, it's, we don't have as much enforcement that we have on weekends, you know? And makes it hard for one officer to do that, you know? You want him to do that, this, Tuesday and third, uh, Mondays and Thursdays, he's gotta go do the checking for the other stuff. It's, it's hard, you know, and, and, and I started telling them that and they're gonna wanna go some.
When I worked at the Galveston park, where we, Stewart Beach, we had trouble with the trash too. The officers, like you said, it's impossible for one thing because they can be sitting there with all the trash. They have it technically littered until they leave.
Correct.
So you'd have to catch them, put it down and leave it there when they get in their cars.
Monitor them until they, okay, I saw you leave and I saw you put it back.
No, it's a hard, it's a hard ticket to write. I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying it's the, the solution at all. I, I think it'll be a nice test for the next couple of weeks to see how, how awful it is and how awful it gets. So.
But we'll say we have been very fortunate, 'cause I've been going out there looking. It's minimal what's being left, so that's not bad, but it hasn't also been packed like Saturday. This will be the test.
It's terrible with the trash cans.
We have the trash cans there, we just don't have the dumpster there.
No, the trash cans.
Not all the trash cans. Trash cans are gone.
Yeah, right now we haven't put them back on the beach. That's right, we took them off of the storm and we haven't put them back on. So, uh, I mean, ideally it's a park board and I'm sure Kendall will keep tweaking it. Everybody's a little snowed right now. I'm sure it hasn't been, been critical to taking up the chain.
I like the idea of looking at Galveston for extra capacity, right? So it's not far, it's in that industrial district, you know, we give a lot for them. You know, for support on the west end, why can't they give us a little bit more consideration? We back them up higher, police, they communicate back us up trash.
It's just throwing away.
What if we, uh, I mean, dump trailers of a big enough size to carry what we need? We would need two ten thousand dollar dump, dump trailers for a weekend, you know?
At least ten, at least ten thousand, maybe not fifteen. Hydraulic ones or?
Yeah, well, I looked at they were ten, the hydraulic dump trailers. You know, and, and, uh, you know, David would have two clean dump trailers on Saturday morning. And then, you know, we just need to find a place to park them on the, the Saturday load and the Sunday load.
You know, how often are their, I don't know, but how often are their crews? They pick it up the same way as our, the trailer and they can get the bags and dump things. How often are they making their west end run? Because if we didn't need a dump trailer at all and they're doing it once or twice a day, they could just, like you said, drive right on through us and pop out.
Yeah, I mean, if the park board would do it for us, for me or, you know, however we negotiated with them, uh, clearly that would be.
That'd be ultimate.
That would be the, the ultimate best option. And, uh, I mean, I could call Mayor Brown, get Greg Robb on board.
And that might be, that might be a best course of action.
See if we can't, uh.
I think the negotiation with, that we provide support through police and fire for their thing and we don't ask a lot. I mean, they give it back to us, don't get me wrong, but just adding, we're probably talking about twenty trash cans, it's not. Shouldn't break their bank.
We're talking about using the existing answer we have.
Don't, don't forget, we, not, not town, it's in Louis Cass, right?
Right.
And Sunny Beach, which they're getting ready to close. Almost all of their other beaches are pedestrian. People park on the street and the ability to carry stuff in is limited. So our beach, our three-quarter mile of beach probably produces as much trash as ten miles of the rest of the western beaches.
A lot, for sure, that's crazy.
I mean, and they only have one trash can every, well, we've got them, what do we have trash cans, Gary, every hundred feet?
Probably. Their operators.
There's about thirty, how many trash cans do we have?
I don't know, but that's probably about thirty.
They're about a hundred feet. When you go drive the west end, which we did the other day, how often did we, they were putting trash cans back? They've got them every quarter month. I mean, they've got, no, every thousand feet, not every quarter month. It's about every thousand feet, they've got a trash can.
But there's gonna be heckles, there's no.
So we do, we do generate a lot more trash.
We have two together every hundred.
Yeah, that's.
That's right, we have two every.
Thirty, thirty stands out there, so two for each one.
Sixty trash cans, yeah. And, and the park board probably has sixty trash cans and ten piles. Now, I don't know what they look like piled stuff around them, but we just have to remember when we're, we're asking them to significantly.
Well, I, I do think, I mean, if, if they were willing to, that we should consider changing our stands to mimic what the.
State parks.
State park has.
Having two.
That are on a squill, so they raise them up and they dump into something. Right now, they're physically reaching in, pulling, pulling stuff up.
They're fat down.
And it rains.
Yeah, they're too heavy to pick up and dump, so, um.
We don't have holes in the bottoms if it rains, right?
Well, it does, but the trash bags are in there, so we, we put trash bags.
They're not gonna kind of hold it in the liner anytime they put it in. Right, they put them in, they fold it over the side.
Yeah.
And try to anyway.
So the state park doesn't do any of that, they just.
If you send them where they get into the park board, I mean, they have their own trash system and obviously they're doing it very well. So, you know, would we just conform, give it to them and con, would we conform them? They, they would take over if they needed ten barrels or two ten, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
They pick up a lot of trash too. I see them out there walking along like in a crew, you know?
Right, they have that full cruise.
Well, in a, in an interim, how, how awful has it been with the dumpster up here? I mean, I know we've got residences too, but just a, a few, but, I mean, at least behind City Hall, you know, yeah, it's impacted the three houses there. But, uh, what's the impact of it right there right now?
Traffic flow is the basic impact, um, yours. But we also have everything else stacked up there too.
Yeah, I know. I know.
I believe that.
The next set of residents.
I think Daryl, the head of park board, means it was, doesn't mean it's.
Okay, I'll try to find that.
So, so your options are to lease top of, to, to Galveston, you're gonna lease, lease some place in their industrial area and truck it over there, right?
Ourselves.
Ourselves, or do something else, relocate this dumpster that we have now, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm just saying for an interim, in my mind, we don't want a dumpster, believe me, Kendall and I drove the city trying to find a place. I mean, I looked at, could we put it over by the water tower? But then your impact, I mean, anywhere you put it in the city, it is impacting residents. And, and nobody wants a trash dumpster in their backyard.
And beach trash needs to stay at the beach or get pulled up.
So it's truck it to them natural site or fuse park board?
So, so, curious about the industrial site, do they just dump it there or they store it and then dump it later? So would.
I, I'm thinking they probably have a yard, they probably have their own yard behind gates, somewhere around Harborside would be my guess. And, and the park board on the weekend, on a Monday through Saturday morning, they probably go to the transfer station and dump it. And, and then, I'm guessing, and then on the weekends, they probably have a yard where they park their truck, trailer, whatever they picked up trash in. And it stays there till they dump it Monday morning when a landfill or a, or a trash truck comes or whatever.
So that would require multiple trailers for us to be able to leave and then a truck actually over there.
Monday morning to dump it, yes. I said, I think we would have to have two, two dump trailers in that scenario. And then we would have to lease the space to park that dump trailer on a weekend. Cause there's no place around here to park it.
Saturday, Sunday, Monday, you might need three trailers.
We might, I mean, I guess we would try to, I mean, the other thing we could do is do one trailer and then in the peak season, we could lease a dump trailer. You know, that might be cheaper than, than having two all the time. Or on a busy weekend, get, you know, lease for your main holiday weekends, Memorial Day, July fourth. You, you lease an extra trailer. I mean, people, people have them to lease and they'll deliver them and all that. It's just money.
I think we ought to develop a relationship though with the park board. With, with the, yeah. Just to see if they can.
Yeah. I mean, I've also, I haven't gotten, heard back from Mara Waste yet, you know, but I asked them, would you drive a trash truck down here on Saturday and Sunday? And we would load up their trash truck and then they would go park on their site until the landfills were open Monday morning. And she hasn't gotten back with me on that because it, you know, I told her, we just need one driver. Our guys would throw it, it's, it's no extra work to throw it from a trailer into a trash truck than it is from a trailer into a dumpster, right? Our guys are doing that anyway. But she hasn't gotten back to me because her crews don't work on Saturday and Sunday and she'd have to pay someone to do that. But, uh, I have reached out to see if that's an option.
Some whole things to consider. I guess we just have to find out who's willing to do something for us, maybe, uh, the park board and if they can't do anything, then we move on to the next alternative. But the bottom line is we need to get that dumpster out of the waste plant.
Well, we need to.
And out of the neighborhood.
We need to get it out of the neighborhood.
I don't understand.
That is clear. So I think the top three options, I think, you're, the park board will help us as number one. Number two is the truck idea you just said because.
The trash truck.
Still going, and then three would be more dumpsters. In that, what would be?
More dumpsters.
Yeah.
Dump trailer to take in.
Trash truck.
Yeah. Yeah.
And lease someplace. Sounds like hello Craig, man.
Yeah, okay.
How you doing, Chief Beiden?
All right, well, we're not gonna leave, um, with trash. Not anybody in the city. Okay, uh, next is my report. I'm gonna reiterate a thank you to staff and council for how much they did during the storm. Uh, it was an honor having Ted Cruz come down and, uh, and having those contacts to reach out as, as we identify needs. Another thing we, we still need to look at, Kendall, that we didn't talk about was, we tried before to reach out, if it's possible to reach out to FEMA and get us identified as a FEMA pod in the event of a storm. It, it works well, so, uh, would like to pursue that. Uh, also when Maze Middleton came down and Terry Leo Wilson, uh, Maze indicated that they have received a, uh, sorry, what, a variance from the state on. sorry, were the variance from the state on paying sales tax. Uh, Kendall's still trying to find out more about that and how to notify businesses that there's been a wave, not, not a waiver, but a delay in when the quarterly tax payments are due. So that businesses that have been impacted by the storm, they might be a little tight to pay that sales tax quarterly right now. Uh, there's been a thirty-day extension, right?
I'm.
We've not been able to find out more about it. We, uh, we will keep working on it. Uh, the other thing I would like to remind citizens at this point is that when I was elected, one of my top priorities was to hire a city administrator. Uh, and I think we hired a great one. And so while I know I'm not as visible as I was, uh, I want everybody to know that that's her plan, right? We, uh, we hired a city administrator to run the city. And that's what Kendall is doing. Uh, and Kendall's communicating, you know, he gets information out there, he's keeping us abreast of things, so. But I also want the city to know that, uh, probably much to Kendall's dismay, we talk daily. And, uh, it's, it's not that I'm not involved, just we've hired a qualified person to run our city and he's doing that. So, uh, if I'm not quite as visible as I used to be, it's not that I'm not as engaged as I used to be. It's just the model that works is having a city administrator run the city and that's what he's doing. Uh, anyway, and some things we're, um, looking at for in the future based on the storm. Uh, we are looking at, at, uh, how we improve maybe cooling centers, warming centers, uh, available to, uh, to residents, how we might, might improve upon that. Um, also I had some comments that, you know, not everybody's electronic. And we did have issues with people not having phones and stuff, so, uh, I'd like to look at a bulletin board somewhere, just one, where all that grand information that we put out on Facebook and Kendall's great explanation of the wastewater system, you know, we could post, uh, weekly, uh, updates of the paper at a given location. Cause I did, we do have a lot of elderly residents that are not as, sadly electronically, uh, so looking at that. We talked about extending the survey, canceling next Thursday. Uh, also to let everybody know, we are still working on audits. Uh, uh, Esther and her, her helper is, is putting information together that's required. But we will be, be bringing forward a schedule here, Kendall's reached out again and said, okay, we need a little more definitive timelines on what your availability gonna be. Um, and another critical item we'll be bringing forward to council is the need for power generation at the sewer plant. So we'll be bringing forward proposals for that, hopefully at the next meeting, which is scheduled for the eighth. And, uh, anyway, thank everybody. Oh, I'd also like to point out that Trino, Pedraza with Galveston, we did reach out to him with the possibility of taking some of our metal flow trucks as we were offloading all the floodwaters that we were inundated with. Galveston did step up and say, you can bring us your gray water. We've got some capacity at our airport plant. So, uh, the, the collaboration there was, was nice. Uh, and staying in contact with Galveston through the whole storm and coordinating activities was, it, it worked well. Uh, hopefully we'll do the same in the future. All right, that's my mayor's report. Do I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'll make that motion to adjourn to executive sessions.
No second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Turn off the camera.
Thank you so much.